May inform all other participants of said recording. I see Harbor Media is on tonight. Is anyone else planning to record this meeting? Okay. And item two is a motion to enter into executive session. Liza, do you want to do the honors?
Sure, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of discussing negotiations with the H.E. the Hingham Education Association, Unit B regarding the reopening of schools, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and to approve the minutes of the executive session held on December 20th, 2021.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. There are people on the call and I'm just going to read the chair comment quickly. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You hereby advise that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F. So the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media will be recording tonight. If anyone else is planning to record, could you just raise your hand or unmute yourself if you're a panelist? Okay, not seeing anyone. I'm Carrie Neam, the chair of the school committee, and I'm participating remotely tonight along with my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Tim Dempsey, Liza O'Reilly. Carlos De Silva is not here tonight, he's visiting family. And also because I know people have asked, there are, in addition to the people on the panel, there are nineteen, twenty people on the call.
So. Carrie, I'm so sorry. Also Elijah, our student rep.
Oh, yes. And also Elizabeth Hoy, who's the freshman representative, may be joining us tonight, too. So we'll, we're looking for her in the participants and we'll elevate her to a panelist if she is able to do that. So we have a number of minutes to approve really quickly. So 4.1 is the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 20th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a comment. Under new business, the section of potential changes to the town naming bylaw. Can we, I'm proposing that we add in, in the middle, after this proposed article relates to the naming of public building and public lands, then to add in, Liza O'Reilly and Carrie Ne shared comments on the bylaw regarding boards being responsible for the building or lands participating in the select board review and a diversity slash equity slash inclusion component to the updates. Period. Also, questions for the naming bylaw committee regarding their review process and whether they are submitting a warrant article for this coming town meeting. Then it goes on to the giving the feedback date of January 20th, and I believe the feedback date was January 4th, because that was the date of the bylaw meeting.
Yeah, that's correct.
I sent these written comments, my additions to Ness, earlier today, so she has them.
Okay, great. So Michelle, do you want to amend the motion?
Yes, so I will amend the motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 20th, 2021, with edits as made by Liza O'Reilly.
A second.
Yeah, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. The minutes are approved. Item 4.2, minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 21st, 2021.
I will make a motion to approve said minutes.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Those minutes are approved. 4.3, approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of January 4th, 2022.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of said meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. 4.4 is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of January 5th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve said minutes.
A second.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Uh, Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. And Ness, I believe you wanted to table 4.5?
Yeah, I just need some time to work on it.
Yep, okay, great. We can do these either on Thursday or at our next meeting. Item five is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to fifteen minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. To raise your hands, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the responsibility of the school committee. As established by Mass. General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Okay, with that being said, I see one hand up, it's Barb McAlvin. Hi Barb.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So I have two questions. My name is Barbara McAlvin, I live over at Hingham Woods, 1605 Tuckers. I'm curious as to when you'll be resuming in-person school committee meetings. I understand Braintree and Hanover, for example, are already having their meetings in person, and I'm wondering when, when you are considering having your meetings in person.
Well, I can answer, we haven't discussed that, but what we found when we did go in person, that people wanted us to meet on Zoom because it was easier, it's more accessible for parents. So we haven't discussed it, but that's kind of where we were. Did you have another question?
I did. Additionally, I understand that Dr. Amante Jackson has been hired by the Hingham Public Schools, and I'm wondering, I guess that's already been done. I'm wondering how much she was paid as a consultant.
I don't know the answer to that. Does anyone, any of the panelists know? We can, we can look into that and follow up with you. I don't have the number on hand, though.
Do you, do you, do you know how then, you know, to whom I should reference this question? Was she hired by a school or she wasn't hired by the board?
No, it was through the Rides Program. It was just, it's a Harvard program that Hingham is working with. But we can get, Dr. LaBella is spearheading that work, so if you wanted to shoot him an email, he could probably find the answers to that.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you so much.
All right, thanks Barb. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. So number six is the superintendent's report. Dr. Maestas.
Hi, everybody. Just have a few things to report on tonight. I think everyone is aware of our status regarding COVID cases from last week. I'm just going to review it so that we can get it out on the airwaves for people tonight. I think it's, right now, as of, as of Friday, these are the numbers for the totals of last week. So Hingham High School, we had 101 students that were COVID positive. Hingham Middle School, we had 57. South Elementary, we had 36. Plymouth River Elementary School, we had 42. Foster Elementary, we had 23. And East Elementary, 31. And we had 45 total staff members last week that were in the COVID positive stage of that process. So keep in mind, this week seems, things seem to be a little bit better as far as the start of the week. So we look forward to see what the numbers look like on Friday. A number of challenges that we have because of COVID. One of the biggest challenges that we have had in the schools, and this is not just Hingham, this is nationally, is most of the COVID cases that we deal with are from outside transmission. Very, very few cases that we see across the board are from internal transmission due to mitigating factors that we have in a school, which is somewhat of a controlled environment. So we just ask parents, anything that you can do to help us with this would be great. I imagine that we'll see the numbers drop in the next couple of weeks, next three, four weeks. But then the big caution we have is February break, when students do go home, go on trips, vacations, people are gathering again. We just want to be, be great if everyone was out, out and about, outside, that would be, if it was possible, that'd be great. But one of the things that we struggle with in schools is, is just dealing with the aftermath of a break like we had, and it's, it's just extremely cumbersome for our building. So I just wanted to share that. And one other thing regarding the schools, I think tomorrow is going to be the coldest day of the year thus far. And I know there's a lot of attention on how cold it's going to be tomorrow. I just want everyone to know that our facilities director, Katie Hartman, emailed me this afternoon and let me know that our buildings for the next three days will be in the occupied mode throughout the day and night. One of the things and difficulty pieces that we have with buildings is to get them up to temperature. It takes quite a while, they're big buildings. So for the next three days, and this is customary, this is something that happens in buildings, especially schools, so that when students, faculty come to school in the morning, that they're up to temperature, and it doesn't take two, three hours to get them there. So just, just know that for the next three days, our facilities director is going to be monitoring our building temperatures, but she's going to ensure that we have occupied temperatures running through the night, so that in the morning, the buildings are not going to be, I mean, it takes, it takes a while for to get these buildings up to, up to speed. So that's where we are with that. I do have a couple of other items relative to the enrollments and also with the strategic, strategic plan, but I will share those under the agenda items later. I just want to also share with you that we are in the process right now. Last week was very difficult for the school district to get anything done other than COVID mitigating issues. But I do want to share preliminary information around vaccination data by teachers, by school. Okay? Now, this is not, I would say that it's not inclusive. I think we still have some teachers that have not reported. I did talk with the H., the Hingham Teachers Association, you know, this last couple of days to see if we could, you know, send out a reminder, along with the reminder that we have that we would like to get this data collected. I want to review what we have right now for our teacher vaccination data by school. Hingham High School, we have 102 teachers. We have 66 that are identified as being vaccinated, that's 65%. Hingham Middle School, we have 108 teachers. 96 are reporting that they have been vaccinated, that's 89%. Plymouth River, 33 teachers. 21 have reported that they are vaccinated, that's 64%. Foster Elementary, 41 teachers. We have 15 that have reported vaccination status, that's 37%. East Elementary, 45 teachers. 32 have reported they've been vaccinated, 71%. And South Elementary, 24 teachers. And 13 of the 24 have reported being vaccinated, which is a total of 54. So keep in mind that I believe that these numbers are not complete, but we're going to be working with teachers to be able to wrap this up by our next school committee meeting. Hopefully, we can get this information. But as you can see, the numbers are not, I believe they're inconclusive. Keep in mind that this is only teacher information. We will be working on other staff members once those bargaining agreements have been complete. But as of today, that's the information. We're also working on a renewed data set for students and their vaccination status. As you all are aware, we have the ability to migrate data from the state database, which actually tracks vaccination. But that's very cumbersome. We have a whole new set, a whole new cohort of students, elementary cohort, that does qualify for vaccination. We're going to be pulling that, and my goal, I was hoping to have it by tonight. But my goal is to try to have a very clear picture for you within the next two weeks. So, and I, I can't say enough about the staff that are working behind the scenes to actually keep buildings open and keep our data where it needs to be, and our nurses doing everything, everything they can to keep kids in school. Unfortunately, some of the same people that we're relying on to help us to do this work, we rely on for a lot of other things, too. So I think last week really put a wrench into the operations of the school district. I think all hands on deck trying to get, you know, testing going and, you know, subs in buildings. But I do believe, based on preliminary information, that the numbers are a little bit more manageable today, and hopefully we'll see those numbers continue to climb over the next couple of weeks. So with that said, Chairperson Ne, I want to turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Tim?
Yeah, just a quick one first. Could you just repeat the high school numbers one more time? I didn't grab them.
The high school numbers, vaccination rate, Tim? It's 66 out of 102? 65%.
Okay. And my, thank you. And my other question was during office hours, some parents were, I know in other districts, they were, parents are able to verify their kid's status on the official list?
Yes, Tim, and you know what? Thank you so much for bringing that up, and that's something that I just, it just slipped my mind. So what we're going to do, and I think it's extremely important for parents to, to hear this, and we'll send out a correspondence with this. So we have a number of children that have been identified through the state M.I.I.S. database that they've been vaccinated, okay? And fully vaccination at this point is, is, if your child, early on, you know, up to fifth grade, it's one dose, you know, up above its two doses. But, but what we're going to do is, we're going to send letters to parents of students that are not showing up as being vaccinated or not being fully vaccinated. And we're going to send them a letter home to let them know that, you know, we're trying to collect this information, it's confidential, we'll give them the same information that we shared with the Hingham Education Association about collecting teacher data, so that they know that this is not something that's open for general public. We're just looking for overall numbers to actually determine by building what that percentage of vaccination is. So what we'll do, I anticipate in the next week to week and a half, parents will get a letter home that will identify that we are looking for this information, and we need their help for us to complete it. There are, by no means are they expected to submit it, but it will help us determine what that vaccination rate is by building. So as we know, that the state still has a 80% threshold that we can meet. That is in effect. And we will try to demonstrate by building what that number looks like. I might add with that statement that this morning, we received an email from the commissioner indicating that the mask mandate has continued, will be continued until February 24th. So the mask mandate across Massachusetts will be to the 24th. The 80% provision is still an option, but again, to your point, Tim, we, we need, it's an 80% building, that's all stakeholders in the building have to meet that threshold. So that's what we're going to be trying to ascertain in the days to come. It's extremely difficult for us to do. Other districts have been a little bit more successful doing it, but you have to keep in mind that every district that has done this work, it's only as, it's only as good as the day that you take that measurement, because there are new students every day that are vaccinated, especially with the elementary school. So I imagine schools across the Commonwealth and other states that have the same provision, drawing this information is, every time you do it, it's like doing it all over again. So it's very cumbersome. So with that said, I know there might be some other questions.
Yes.
All right.
Thanks so much for the report, and I just wanted to thank the teachers and the nurses. I know this has been extraordinary, trying to do the, the contact tracing, so really appreciate it. I just wanted to share the concerns that I keep hearing from the community are, given the numbers that have gone up, particularly at the high school, the concern about lunch and what that looks like. And then when the kids do have to be out, it's really hard for them to be out and miss those lessons. So there's significant amount of stress from that, from the high school students. So figured I would share that.
You know, Ness, I think they're, they're on target. It's a very trying time. At the high school, we did put provisions in for an outside place for kids to go. Now with the weather where it's at, and also with the tents, the vendor of the tents, you know, will not approve a tent out in, in the winter, you know, because they have a tent to look out for. Yeah, we have kids to look out for, you know? So it's one of those things that it's a, it's a, a trying situation. I did talk with Principal Swanson today about searching for opportunities to spread kids more during lunches to be able to accommodate for the concern that, that is out there. So thank you for sharing that information.
Michelle?
All right, thank you. Mine is sort of a follow-up to that as well. Just because of the cold weather that we are going to be experiencing over the next couple of days, do you have a sense of what parents can expect for snack breaks, lunch, those types of things? I mean, it's individual teacher discretion, I'm just, is there sort of a sense?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm not, we have not, I met with the principals today. We did a conference call to go over. I thought it was important today, about 1:30, we did a call just to kind of gauge where they were today. You know, after last week and after the weekend, and, and we didn't talk about breaks. So those are things that the schools are managing. Again, one of the most difficult things for us to do is to, you know, even to have a consistent, you know, policy or guidance, every building has such different conditions. You know, you have, every building has different spaces and open spaces that they can utilize. So we really left that up to the building principals to be able to make adjustments on the fly based on conditions in the building. So what we can do tomorrow, Jamie's meeting with the principals in the morning, we can, we can have a conversation with them to try to share that information to parents as to how they are going to manage some of those situations. I think some of the mitigating circumstances or factors that we put in place for our schools have really helped with the success of keeping kids coming to school. So it's just another layer, how do we do that during cold weather? And of course, opening the windows is just not, is just not going to work.
Right. I think, just thank you to that point, and I guess what I would just ask is for, like, we're coming into a confluence of unfortunate events right now, right? We've got the COVID, Omicron surge, we've got this really cold weather. So just, you know, if folks can just be patient while we work this out, because, you know, it is, it is new and it is different. And every, you know, and teachers, you know, have some autonomy over their classrooms, and, you know, people have different levels of risk, both staff and families. So I think it's just everyone can take a breath and get through these next couple of days.
You know, that's a good point. Michelle, I, the patience level came in on day one of school at a 50, you know? And, and, you know, usually we're down to like a 10. But we're up there now, it's high. And, you know, we have some challenges and, but yeah, we'll, we'll try to communicate that. We'll, we'll talk with the principals tomorrow.
Thank you. Liza?
Yeah, I have a really quick question. The numbers for South, can you repeat those? It seemed very low.
South, 24 teachers. That number sounds low to me, because South is our largest elementary.
Right, that's why I didn't, maybe that's just what they've collected so far?
You know what? I can confirm tomorrow.
Okay.
We've been going back and forth trying to get these. Again, last week really put a wrench into the thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, but to that point, I will have an update to the school committee, so as I get it, and as soon as we feel that we're, we're complete, we'll do a communication out to the community.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's understandable. So the, and then to follow up on Tim's comment about parents, I noted that there's a nearby town that is allow, has a form that parents can actually just voluntarily submit their information. Is, is that something we could set up just to speed up the process and as a double check? But encourage people to?
That's a good point, Liza. We, we have a number of parents have already shared that information, and that is collected in their, in the nurses' offices. So there's a great deal of communication, especially with pool testing. So that, that dialogue between parents and school has happened quite a bit. So I think that is, is a benefit, but I think one of the things that we'll do, and I like the suggestion, we talked about doing this even with the teachers, about doing electronic submission, we can definitely do that. It's something I can set up. We can do an online submission where they have uploaded. The biggest concern we have is we want, we want families to, to feel that that is secure, you know?
Yeah, okay. Jen?
Yes, no, just to, and as to Liza, I've noticed with a couple of schools that, that they've been able to update their vaccination status through their Aspen profile, and that might help with the security. Because, you know, your site.
Jen, that's a, a great thought, and you know what? We, we had our data, Deb, our data manager, create a category, which is really only viewable by, by the nurses, so it's something that we can, we can look into.
Great. And then Elizabeth Hoy, she's our freshman representative, welcome. If you could unmute yourself. See, she has her hand up. Yeah, Elizabeth, if you could just unmute yourself so we can hear you. I am going to move on to, there are a couple of hands up. There are two, two people, oh, Tim?
I have another question, Carrie.
Oh, yeah.
And, I know this, just other things that are, came up in the office hours that Michelle and I did last week is, I know there's, it's nice to have problems that aren't breathing down our neck. There are some parents wondering if we could submit the application to go mask optional, but then that wouldn't go into effect with that until the school committee would vote on it, because really, we're following our own policy right now as well. I just wanted to get feedback on that.
Well, we're not, we have demonstrated.
Once the number, once the numbers are there, I know they're not there.
That is some direction, this, that, that direction I'd have to, to leave up to the school committee, you know? Because it's tied to the policy.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we can put that on an agenda when we have that information. There are two hands up, Rebecca Nettasitko, if you can unmute yourself.
Thanks, Carrie. Rebecca Nettasitko, 5 Lilliput Lane. I just wanted to clarify, my data presented by school, is that for the school staff and teachers, or is that just? Or is that just teacher data?
Rebecca, thank you so much for your question. I mentioned that the information that I shared tonight is only for teachers. Once we get the staff data, which means anyone that's not classified as a teacher or administrator, we will then contribute, we'll add it to this. But right now, we don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rebecca. Matt?
Gary, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Sorry, Mac Hosman, 12 Summit Drive. So Gary, I, I can appreciate certainly this past week being a crazy week. But I, I guess I, I do struggle a bit with how we are so far behind other towns in terms of just collecting all of this data. I mean, other towns have had this for three and a half months, literally. And apply to Desi, I, I just, I, I don't know. I, can, can you talk a little bit more about how we still don't have a full picture? And I would, and then I would just echo Liza's comment. And I, I know I, I asked you about this in late September about this attestation form. Like, I really think that's the easiest way to collect the data for, for parents to, to do it. And it feels like that could go out in a day. So anyways, I, I just love your perspective on that.
Yeah, and Matt, that's a, a really good question. And it's somewhat of a difficult question to answer. I'll, I'll be as clear as I can. I, I used to be the, the, the technology coordinator in my former school district a long time ago. And my, my job was to make sure that we had systems that were able to, to do what we needed. You know, talk to databases and be able to extract certain pieces of information. I think one of the issues that we've realized here in the district is some of these school districts had a, an intermediary software that was able to communicate directly with the M I I S database that is run by the state. Hingham did not have that software. So we had to procure the software, the software transitioning. And I know this is hard to believe, it's hard to believe in myself. The software transitioning took about two or three weeks. There is a third party vendor that actually has to make this connection. Okay, so that vendor, their wait time was another three weeks. Meanwhile, I'm sitting in my office tooling my thumbs, wondering how can we get these databases to talk to each other? Right? So that was extremely frustrating for us. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we, we, we've been able to resolve some of those issues. But our last data run was, was, you know, before the, the elementary students were able for, able to get vaccination. But, you know, there are no excuses, there are absolutely no excuses. The, the, the biggest issue that we've had is we are, we have been unprepared to be able to do this work, and we are preparing ourselves to be able to make sure that it can be done systematically as time goes on. So I think that's, it's, you know, this test has helped Hingham to get better in that aspect. We've actually introduced a piece of software into our nurses' offices that actually helped to track this information. So everything that we're collecting now is in this piece of software, and that's finally working. So we're working on that, and that's been somewhat of a challenge. But I think the point that's being made, and Liza brought it up, is to ask parents for that. You know, it still takes people to do that. And I think part of the problem that we have, and I've shared this with the school committee, you know, you have to understand, and I've said this to people, and I don't, I don't mean to be flip about it, but, you know, I'm, I'm the interim. I'm trying to make sense of everything that comes down the pike. And to be quite honest with you, some of these issues that we've had, we have been unprepared to deal with. And it's, it's a system issue, and also it's personnel issue. So we're trying to manage it to the best of our abilities. And we have a handful of people that are managing what other school districts have departments for. So with that said, you know, I, I, and on, on the other side, we have a policy, we have, we have a policy in place right now that says, you know, we, we have a mass mandate. So, you know, i- i- if there is an immediacy to, well, we will work diligently to try to get this done. The immediacy has been there for us, but it's been extremely difficult. So, hey, like I said, I'm trying to do everything I possibly can. I've got some great people supporting the office, but it's, it's been diligent. It's been diligent work, but difficult to get.
Thank you. Rebecca, did you have something else, or is your hand still up from before?
Are you waiting for, I'll say there are 36 people on the call.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I just had a follow up I meant to ask earlier. So the data is the teachers have the staff been asked to submit. Will they be asked to submit? Is there a problem in asking them to submit?
Well, Rebecca, it's, it's complicated. And it's, I, I can ask, but we're in negotiations right now with that unit. And, you know, that's part of, of negotiations.
Thank you. Wendy Driscoll?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yep.
Wendy Driscoll, 24 Charles Street. Thanks for taking my question. Just following up on Matt's comments, there's a number of South Shore towns around us who have been reporting this data, some since September, actually. So Situate, Cohasset, Norwell, Marshville, Pembroke, Hanover, and Duxbury, all.
I'm, I'm aware of those districts. I, I am aware. I talk with those superintendents on a weekly basis, and I'm aware of what they've done. I'm aware of how they do it, and I'm aware of what we don't have to get it done.
I guess it's, I mean, for the school committee, how is this meeting expectation? If all of these schools around us have been reporting this data, and not only that, but four of them have submitted to Desi to go mask optional. Situate, Cohasset, and Norwell are mask optional right now for the high school. Duxbury also was granted, submitted, but they didn't get approval because of the shared space with middle school. So not only have they been reporting the vax rates since October, November, they've also, the South Shore towns, these border us, these towns are no different than us. They've asked their parents to review the M I S, the M I I S data in October and November. So again, how is this meeting expectation if we're slow rolling it?
I think Dr. Maestus was clear that we don't have what we need to get that. And additionally, each town does what's right for their town. It's, it's up to their, their school committees to do it. They are individual, and just as each building is individual in our district, each town is, is, is individual as well. So, okay, thank you. Elizabeth, were you able to?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Um, I was going to suggest something earlier about being able to take in different things about being vaccinated for students. I was going to suggest an idea that maybe, I know that we've done surveys in the past during like gym class and stuff like that, or just in regular classes that teachers could promote maybe like a Google form that students could put out that they've been vaccinated, or they could send it out in an email, because I know lots of parents read weekly emails that the principals send out.
So Elizabeth, I think that's a great suggestion. One of the challenges that we have is we need to have a copy of your vaccination record to be able to validate that you are vaccinated. So if that is the case, we could create a Google form that has an upload that you could actually take a picture of it and upload it. The concern that we have, and, and we've heard from, from others, is how secure is that information? And that's, that's one of the things that we've had, that we've struggled with.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I know that, um, that definitely some people have been, I don't know if this is an ongoing problem, but people can fake vaccination cards and stuff. So I don't know if there's like, an, like authenticity thing about a vaccination card that you would be able to tell if it's like verified by wherever the person was vaccinated.
I want to hire you, Elizabeth. For us. No, but I think your point's well taken with that. And, and that's what we do with teachers, is we ask them to, to, to bring a copy, and we'd make a copy at, at the office so we can validate vaccination. So that's one of the things that we're, we're, we're doing now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Jen, did you have something else?
Um, yes, I, I'm sure you probably know this, but today there was a new program that came out through the, called Access My Vaccination Records. And you can, I did it today, it's really easy. And you're gonna, you can get it within 24 hours.
Right.
To your email.
That's great.
Yeah, I, I have mine through my primary care provider. I log in. It tells me when I took, when I took the, the different doses. And for me, that's easier to print a screen of my phone, you know, so that helps.
Yeah, this gives you a little credit. And it's through M I S, M I I S, I believe.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to communications. And first is student communications. Elijah here.
Yeah, so not to, not to belabor the point, because we've just gone over this extensively, but I was going to say a little bit on student sort of fears, just generally speaking, but we've gone over that pretty extensively in the past few minutes. I will say, especially as it relates to mid-years, which I understand may or may not be a conversation topic in this meeting. No, okay, well, I don't mind. There's, there's some general anxiety more than the regular exam season about possibility of having to make those up, or how many people are, are out and can't do it. So I guess we'll just have to see how that pans out going forward. In terms of what we're up to currently, we being the committee, we, obviously the superintendent search process has been completed. And we were quite heavily involved in that, as well as a number of other student clubs and organizations. And we're, really happened, there was a high level, excuse me, high level of engagement with such an important issue. Going forward, since we now, that's, we're not really involved in that anymore, we've been working to really bring ourselves into perceptions. We've created a direct portal through which students can contact us just directly and would be able to speak here on all concerns, opinions, such things. And that's the majority. One brief plug there, on Thursday of this week, actually, there's going to be a small ensembles concert at the middle school at seven. If you, if, I, I would encourage everyone to either attend that virtually, I believe a link will be circulated at some point, or if you can go to that, that would be a great show of support for people who have worked very hard to prepare it in such a unfortunate circumstance. And that's about all I've got, unless, Elizabeth, you wanted anything else?
Um, I was going to say, especially about midterms. I know that in the past couple of years, juniors have only taken them, I believe, once in high school. And freshmen have never actually taken a standard midyear in seventh, eighth, and what is now to be ninth grade. So I was going to say either have possibly a practice midterm of the classes that I'm in right now. I have not been prepped yet for midterms. And I feel that for some students, it could be a necessary stress with the studying that would be happening next week. And if we are starting studying next week, it would be the week of midterms that we do start.
Yeah, oh, thank you both. And so we don't have midterms on the agenda for tonight. We do, we are looking at some COVID policies a little later on, which could impact that. So, but I hear what you're saying, it's, it's a stressful time. I also want to thank Elijah and everyone for helping with the superintendent search. I think it was your findings were really, really informed us a lot. It's one thing to say we want some, to find somebody who's student focused. You are probably the best judges of that, so we really appreciate your help with that. Just one, I wanted to say about the concert on Thursday, I would love to go. We have a budget meeting that night, unfortunately, so we're not going to be able to. But if you can keep us up to date about those things, is I, it's the best thing about this role is being able to go to per student performances and everything, so, so thank you. Ness, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Elijah had mentioned. You had mentioned the portal that you have for feedback. How can students find that and where might they find more information on it?
Yeah, so we have put up, with, with the help of the, the student council, put up a very large, a high volume of these posters with a QR code on them, which can be scanned and that goes straight to us. We also have our emails on there. And at some point, hopefully during this week, we're going to try to just make a general school announcement to people, be, be certain of what these things are. Because they, they did sort of just appear, and we want to make sure people know that this is a thing that they can use.
Great.
So it's still sort of under, it's still sort of in process, but it's, the first stage is there.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, I don't see anything else. So next is communications received by the superintendent. Do you have anything, Gary?
No, I'm, I'm good, other than a couple of other items I can report on later.
Okay, great, thank you. So next, 7.3 other communications. I had something about that. We all received a number of emails about paraprofessional compensation over the, like, starting Friday night and through the weekend. And we want to thank everyone for sharing their thoughts. Conversations that happen during negotiation sessions are confidential, so the school committee doesn't talk about them. What I will say, though, is that the paras, they're, they're very valuable members of our school team. And we recognize that they, like all the members of our school, school community, are working especially hard during COVID. But I did want to note that the time to address compensation is during successor contract negotiations, which will happen next year. We also, we could currently have a memorandum of agreement on working conditions related to the reopening of school for the 2021, 2022 school year with Unit A, which is the teachers. And we're currently working with Unit B, which is the paraprofessionals, to hopefully come to an agreement regarding working conditions related to the reopening of school this year. I also wanted to address one other point that's in a lot of these emails, and that's the suggestion that we use COVID relief money to pay paras more. And it's just important to notice that those funds have already been allocated to remediate student learning loss and to provide additional social, emotional support for students. That was part of our budget discussions last year. So any, again, thank you to everyone who contacted us, and you will, will receive or apply shortly from the committee. Does anyone else have any other communications? Nope. Okay, next is unfinished business, 8.1 update on the superintendent search. We found somebody. So, so we were very excited about working with Dr. Adams. And salary negotiations will be meeting later this week to get organized, and we will start talking to her about a contract. So thank you to everyone who helped with the search process, who, who shared your feedback with us, and who reached out to people in the communities too. It was all really helpful. And again, to the students for all their, their work on this too. Um, next is 8.2, the strategic plan update. Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, so right now we are hitting close to our first benchmark, and we're identifying about 18 to 20 people that'll be on the strategic planning committee. I do need two school committee members, so if you could send me those names, we're going to ask for some parent representation. So we'll be meeting with the teacher organization to actually help us provide some names for that. But we're trying to get a, a very wide cross-section, working with the Hingham Education Association to get us three teachers representing each segment of the elementary, middle, and high school population of the district. So by next meeting, I'll be able to share with you what that team will look like. Keep in mind, for the community, we're going to start having focus groups. And those focus groups, I want to repeat them so everyone can have an opportunity to, to join in on them, okay? So the first focus group is scheduled for January 24th from 4:00 to 5:30, and that's for staff. Second focus group is January 27th from 3:00 to 4:30, and that's leadership of the district. Focus group, January 27th from 7:00 to 8:30, that's a school committee, and I understand we may need to tweak that date. And we also have a focus group, which is And we also have a focus group, which is for parents and the community. That's going to be February 3rd from 7:00 to 8:30. We were initially trying to have these face-to-face. If they are going to be face-to-face, we will ensure that we have a venue that is large enough for distancing and amplification so that we can actually have that opportunity. You know, work out for everyone. And we're planning on having a fifth focus group that will be virtual and that will be for municipal government and municipal employees. You know, police, fire, town administrators to just talk about it. And then we'll start a strategic planning meetings. These are the meetings that will be put together for the committee that we're forming. It's an arduous process, February 22nd, March 15th, April 6th, April 28th. And the last meeting will be May 18th. So once we recruit this group, we're in the process of doing that now. They will have these dates, but the work of combining the information for the strategic plan will, will, will be, you know, we'll have focus group data, we'll have survey data. We're going to be sending out a survey to the committee on February 3rd through 18th. And that will go to all stakeholders. And stakeholders, they can identify with stakeholder group they represent and will be a series of questions that they'll have to be able to contribute. But the information from the survey, information from the focus groups, and also Dr. LaBillaud will, is actually putting together a large set of data that will tell a picture of the district or tell a story of the district through data. And the team will actually be looking at that, at that data as well. So survey data, focus group data. You know, all this data that we're collecting in the district will help us to kind of inform the process. But it's, it's, it's a, you know, like I said, I think we'll have this in a format that school committee can, can deliberate sometime in late June.
That's great. Is there a way to put all this information on the website? Just the plan so people can see it?
I'll have Heather work on it tomorrow.
Great, thank you. I see one hand up. Barb McAlvin?
Sorry, Barb McAlvin again. Gary, I think at one point you had started to talk about enrollments, but then we got off on another track. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that.
Barbara, Barbara, that's, that's, we have another agenda item after this and then the enrollment update, so.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Thanks, Barbara. Okay, well, that's great. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, not seeing any. Next is to consider general interim policies on COVID-19 related issues. This is the second read and to act as appropriate. Jen, you want to take this one?
So I'm just gonna need to share my screen.
Should be able to, I think.
It says host disabled participant.
Okay, hold on a sec. Okay, that should work now.
You see it? Okay, so we have the Hingham Public Schools interim policy and COVID-related issues. These are committee members. This is a second read. And these are the policies that were revised, that were in place last year during the emergency. COVID-19 emergency. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through all of them. Like I said, the second read, there were no changes from when we went through it on the first time. And I will quickly add that the COVID, the travel policy is not included on this one. Because we are waiting to have, get information from the medical team that we are convening to give us some information on that. So this is just the general district goals, but then I'm like, and then starting with class size, attendance, grading and retention, local graduation requirements, special ed exempt for particular group students, job descriptions, students at risk, privacy of students, back school instruction, home bound instruction, and safety officers.
Okay. That's great.
And then the, I just wanted to mention, there is also attendance, participation and grading and retention, and then also attendance. Those are two separate categories that are under this policy. And if anyone on the committee have any questions?
You want to come out of shared screen?
Yeah. Let me just figure out how to do that.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the policies as they presented? Liza?
Yeah, so I'm fine on the policies. I guess one thing for what the students raised regarding, you know, the grading and retention policy and that that would be, the superintendent can propose it, but it's subject to approval of the school committee. So I would request that if we are, if we are going to be looking at the grading weight or implementation of midterm exams, that we could get a proposal at a budget meeting on Thursday. We have it in plenty of time in advance for teachers to plan.
Sorry, Liza? Sorry. Liza? Sorry. We missed that. Yep.
So I know last year it was welcomed by the staff of not having the, the impact of, of implementing the tests with a hybrid mode and that now I know that, you know, coming back now with the variation and pressures of COVID of people being out and not having remote learning, that it's, it's a very difficult and very stressful time. So I think if the sooner we can make a decision on that and make that public, it will be better for everyone.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have something?
Yes, sorry, that was sort of my question too, just like wondering on that grading and retention, if that like is that they give enough time for something to come back to us to approve? If I was, I'm sorry, I don't, I, my kids aren't in high school anymore, so I don't have the midterm schedule.
Yeah, Gary, I think is.
Yeah, I believe that Principal Swanson is prepared to put together a document that you can review on Thursday. I actually talked with him this afternoon. So I think it's in line with what happened last year. So I think he'll, he could even join us at a given time to kind of talk, talk us through it, but I think it's something that he brought to my attention late last week. And I think it's something that can be prepared for Thursday.
Right.
I think your point is well taken in the sense that you have to understand that teachers do a lot of prep work in in, you know, preparing for mid-terms and students have to study. So it's, they kind of go hand in hand with what the students said earlier.
Right. All right. So let's add that to the agenda on Thursday. We can just put it first thing, some people. So any other comments or questions on the policies? Jen, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the general interim policies of COVID-19 related issues. Act appropriate.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness? Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the policies are approved and I will send them to, over to MASC too, so I can add them into our policy manual. All right, 8.4 is an enrollment update.
Yeah, so this, this topic came up last Thursday during our budget session. And John is going to put together a trending of enrollment for the last few years. But I just want to walk through the enrollments of Hingham, starting with East Elementary. East Elementary has 413 students enrolled. Foster has 423. Plymouth River, 374. And South, as we mentioned earlier, is our largest elementary with 502, which gives us a total at the elementary for 1712. A total at the elementary across all four schools is 1,712. So we go to Hingham Middle School. We have a total of 873. And at Hingham High School, we're at 1202. So we're at 1202. The district total, including 78 students at the pre-K level is 3,865 students. That's 3,865.
Great. Do you, do you know, and you may not, in the pre-K level, how many of those children are on IAPs and how many are typical peers?
Good question.
I can find that out for you and get right back to you. You can do that right now.
That's great. All right, Jen, did you have something?
Yes, I was just wondering if this, could we have it, could this be put up on the Hingham Public Schools website?
Yeah, I'm sure we can do something. Well, we can have, maybe I can have Heather do a graphic and get it posted. But again, I think it's, how do we, how do we post it so it's a link and it's tactful? And it looks good because I think that the website's hard to remember, but we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I just wanted to thank you for putting this together. This is a, I, I appreciate the data.
Well, you know what? I think Thursday's data will be much more of an opportunity to paint a picture, right, of the trending over time. And, you know, we talked about it this morning, John and Diane, and the, and, you know, it's something that he's done for years. So I think he has a good handle on, on how we can kind of compile it and actually talk about it within the budget process.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion too. If we put it with the budget documents, then it has the context. Ness?
Yeah. Can we also get information on vocational and out-of-districts students as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Liza?
Yeah, can, can we make sure that the data is the October 1 data? So that it's consistent with the time period of every year? And it's consistent with the DUCI reporting?
Yes. I think we had asked for January, which is why it's.
Yeah, I mean, this is helpful for now, but when we're for the budget stuff, we need to make sure that it's the same moment in time every year.
Yeah, and Liza, I think that's an important piece because when you, when you start taking a look at chapter 70, you start taking a look at at the per pupil adjustments that are made at the state level, they go off October 1. So we'll, we'll make sure, we did report it early on and, but we'll, that number will be relative. And I, I almost guarantee that the number that John would refer to is, is going to be October 1 numbers anyway.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ness, did you have another one? Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing here. Okay, Laura Atchitella, is her hand up?
Hi, this is Laura Atchitella. Hi, this is Laura Atchitella for Boulder Glen Road. I understand you're going to be pulling together more of this data to illustrate trends, but I was just wondering if on this call you could share a year-over-year comparison for the enrollment data?
I think that we're going to talk about that in the budget meeting.
Yeah, that'll be Thursday. I don't have that with me.
Yeah, on Thursday. Okay, thank you.
Laura, I think, thank you for the question. I think it's my newness to the position. I'd probably have that in my head if I was, you know, if I was here for a while, but. From an October 1 standpoint, these numbers are very close to last year too. I mean, we thought they were going to rebound, but you know, they're, they're sitting at the 38. I think something wants me to say 3824 for last year.
But that, that would reduce by the 78. You know, the pre-K, we don't normally do the count of the pre-K. So, I mean, but we certainly will give comparisons of these numbers for October 1 for, you know, several years at the budget meeting on Thursday.
And I think to Liza's point, it'll be like data, you know, so the great span and also the October 1 timeframe. So thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, so item 9.1 in new business is to receive the notification of appointments of Allison Burton, Maureen Connor, Jessica Caesar, Brenna Gil-Martin, John Goggan, Christine Grande, Jennifer Iverson, and Vijay Shomani. So welcome to Hingham. We're glad to have you. And then 9.2 is to receive notification of the resignations of Jay Carlson, Roberta Cosman, Cara Gannon, James Lombardi, Jaclyn Nolan, Kristin Stenstrom. And I just want to thank you all for your service to the district. Item 10 is subcommittee and progress, project reports. Michelle, do you want to start?
Sure, I don't have a lot. I feel like it's been superintendent search for the last four, four to six weeks. We, the Metco family coffee was postponed from last week because of the superintendent deliberations. But I believe, I'm going to circle back with Carol Perez to reschedule that for this month. The CPAC is having courageous conversations on scheduled for January 25th. So Dr. Venice, thank you for putting that invitation out there and coordinating that. The building committee met weekly over the month of December. We are now, things are moving forward and progressing nicely. And we are now moving to every other week for meetings. So a little quieter now. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Jen, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ness, do you have anything?
Yeah, we continue to have weekly sustainability budget task force meetings on Thursdays. We have an upcoming finance, capital and facilities subcommittee meeting this Thursday before our budget session. And then the equity and inclusion working group met on the 5th.
Thank you. Tim, do you have anything?
I'm just trying to get a special subcommittee meeting later this month and there's a half meeting tomorrow.
Liza?
Salary negotiations are going to meet on Thursday afternoon. And for the wellness committee, Suzanne Venice and I met on January 4th and we talked about getting the district wellness committee established. And we're going to plan on early March, reporting at a school committee meeting for encouraging parent reps, community representatives on the committee and also student representative. So we wanted to take a pause because so many of the people involved with that committee are really, are very busy with health and food services and are, you know, really wrapped up with COVID things right now. So we decided for early March. But that work is Suzanne and I have a plan on that, so that work is in play for getting that committee established. And then also, we had talked about it in our last school committee meeting, that the wellness subcommittee meeting was sending out a letter requesting information from the many different supporting groups of Hingham Public Schools who provide funds and programs and many volunteer hours to support our students so that we can collect information about how they operate and do an evaluation of the equity work that they're all doing. And so those letters went out the beginning last week and today, the last batch of. And today, the last batch of them went out. I've talked to a handful of people to answer more questions about that work. And we put a deadline of January twenty-first for people sending us back the information. We moved it back a little bit from December. It was superintendent search got in my way and I took a little break over the vacation. So, but those are out now and in the community. And if anyone has questions, they can contact me or Ness or Michelle, um, for clarification of the information that we're looking for. But for anyone receiving the letter, we are starting this work of understanding all the support that's out there, and that's our goal is to start understanding. We're not trying to cancel things. We're really trying to look at how, uh, best practices of all the different groups can help one another. And then also ensuring that there's equitable support across all of our students and across all the buildings as well. So that's the intent, and we hope everyone can get us information.
Thank you. Yeah, it also highlights the, the incredible fundraising that our parents do for, and they, they do a lot to support the schools, and it's nice to highlight that too. Um, so PRS met this afternoon. Uh, they discussed their equity team, the building-based one, which will begin meeting shortly. They talked about how they're spending their Title One funding and the toolbox, social emotional tools. And the current tool is the listening tool. I've been working on that. Um, they also discussed the many steps involved in contact tracing that have to take place when a pool test positive, as well as the efforts that they make to ensure that students have a familiar adult around when they undergo pool testing or test and stay. Um, they're just really doing some great work over there. So it was a good meeting. Um, now we have eleven other items as may not reasonably known forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Michelle? Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Tim?
I, I thought we had eleven items that under twenty-four hours is what you just said. It stopped my heart a little bit, Gary.
No. Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well.